Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, members of the Commission. Thank you for attending this evening. This is the regular meeting of the Stonington Planning and Zoning Commission of February 18th, 2025. Let the record reflect that I called the meeting to order at 7:00 p.m. First item on the agenda is appointment of alternates. All regular members are present this evening, and everyone will be seated, all regular members for every public hearing item, Clifton?
Correct.
So the regular members will be seated throughout, both regular session and public hearing. Next item, I thank our alternates for their faithful attendance, for being here. It is very important that we have the full board here. Minutes for the January 21st meeting was the Commission's pleasure.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the meeting number 1779 from January 21st, 2025, as submitted.
Second.
Motion by Ryan, thank you, Ryan. Is there a second? Alyssa, second. I'm sorry. Second, okay, I'm sorry. Second by Commissioner Morrison, thank you. Any discussion on January 21st? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. January 23rd.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1780 from January 23rd, 2025, as submitted.
Motion by Ryan, thank you, Ryan, to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, and thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain, I was not present at that one.
Okay, one abstention. Everyone else in favor? Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? One. Motion passes. Minutes on February 4th, on number 1781.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for meeting number 1781 from February 4th, 2025, as submitted.
Motion by Ryan to approve, thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Gary, thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the minutes of February 4th? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any abstentions? Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Public comment? Clifton, I think you have one item here.
Yes. I had one, I had Attorney John Chase, who previously represented a client on or speaking against PZ 2314 SUP. This is the Janet LLC gas station down on 54 South Broad. He just wanted to pass out this packet. I'm not going to read all of that into the record, but I'm going to distribute it just for the Commission's pleasure. He asked me to distribute it tonight, but I'll have a copy on file for anyone in the public, too.
Does that conclude your comment?
That's my comment.
Okay. For anyone in the audience that would like to speak on any matter that is of interest to you, planning and zoning matter that is not on the agenda, it's an opportunity for you to stand up and let us know what you're thinking. Just come up, take the mic, give us your name, and the mic is yours. Again, anyone wish to make a public comment? Hearing none, we'll move on to correspondence. Clifton?
Second item that was put in the packet and distributed is just a notification from Connecticut DOT that they are looking to put in a maintenance facility, and that's going to be located at the intersection of Route 2 and 78. So it's in that, currently the park and ride lot, so they're going to be putting, they're looking to put in a facility and salt shed there. And so that's just notification. If anybody wants to make a comment on that, feel free to go to the DOT website.
Did they submit any plans with it?
They do have them available online. I believe the town engineer has a copy of the plans.
Okay.
But we can find a copy if needed, but they're online.
Okay, thank you, Clifton. Anyone have any questions, or Clifton, on that matter? Any other correspondents? We'll move to reports. Anything from the staff?
As I mentioned at the last meeting, we're having our POCD kickoff on Thursday, February 20th, at 6:00 p.m. across the street at the Human Services Building. The purpose of that meeting, again, is just to do an initial kickoff introduction with the consultant SLR. They're going to be running through their proposed project schedule, some of the goals they look to achieve throughout the POCD process. They're going to be discussing a survey that they're going to eventually be putting out, all of those kind of questions, comments, concerns that you start with really at the beginning of a POCD. And then the second part, as I again mentioned at the previous meeting, was going to be dedicated to an internal discussion with the Commission on whether or not you want to set up a subcommittee, steering committee, or some variation of that to guide the POCD process. So that's the purpose of Thursday's meeting. Any other questions, please reach out to me.
Anything else on the staff report? No. Under Commission, I have a couple items. I received from the First Selectman's Office notification that there's training available on FOI, and I'll be sending out the registration process to each of you. It's not mandatory, and it doesn't qualify under the statute that requires us to get planning and zoning training every several years. But FOI is an interesting law and something that we are all bound to comply with, so it's wise to be knowledgeable about it. I think we have a very good record in the way we handle it, but that, no small part is due to, I think that everybody is very mindful of it. So I'm going to attend the training, and you're all welcome to do so as well, and I'll be sending that out, or actually, I'll share it with Clifton, he can circulate it. I've attended it once before, same group, and it's very well done. Other item that I have under this is, we had a lengthy discussion at our last meeting about an amendment to our regulations, and there was a divergence of opinions around the table, and I think some very good feedback by all Commissioners and some substantive opinions, and the majority of the Commission went in the direction of keeping the regulation the same for now. I have asked Clifton to do some additional staff work on this, and it will come up, this matter will come up again under this agenda item at the March regular meeting to continue our discussion, so that as some feared, we would not act on it quickly enough, I do want to bring this back after we have done a little bit more research on it, so that we can put some science around some of the recommendations that have been made and adopt something that could never be confused with some of the arbitrary stuff we were talking about the last time, and refrain from adopting. So that will be coming up at our first regular meeting in March. That's not our next meeting, but the first regular meeting in March. And that's all I have. Does anyone else have anything they care to bring up under the good of the order here for the Commission? Hearing none. You've seen the zoning enforcement violations, notifications, any comments on any of that, Clifton?
None.
Okay. And nothing under admin review, which brings us to old business. And the only item under old business is Mason's Island Fire District, represented by CLA Engineers, application number PZ 2501 CAM. And it's Coastal Area Management Review for installation of 130-foot buried stone revetment. Is someone here from Mason's Island Fire District? Okay.
I'm from CLA, representing the applicant.
That's fine.
Yeah. I have some graphics, they put on a pedestal, would it be best to put them here, so we won't see them?
Someone has an easel in the back there, maybe they'll let you borrow it.
Okay.
And if you could introduce yourself for the record, please.
My name is Darren Hayward from CLA Engineers.
Evening.
Good evening. Okay. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commission members. Again, my name is Darren Hayward from CLA Engineers, and I'm representing Mason's Island Fire District, who are the applicant for this coastal area management permit application. Purpose of this application is to present a project to protect a localized section of Chippewa Chaw from erosion that is currently occurring to the coastline of Mason's Island. Chippewa Chaw is owned and maintained by the Mason's Island Property Owners Association, and traces a line along the eastern side of Mason's Island, as you can see in the image there. At a point just north of Allen's Alley, its current alignment brings it fairly close to the waters of Long Island Sound, and recent erosion over the coastline at this particular location is causing the water line to come ever closer to the road edge. And I'm told by the association that the water does overtop that road and go beyond it during larger storm events. The Fire District is currently developing a more long-term shoreline protection project that aims to improve the long-term resilience of the shoreline at this location. However, due to its sensitive location and the type of work proposed, the project has been subject to some lengthy permitting reviews. And, you know, all the while, the coastline continues to be subject to further erosion. So the Association monitors erosion of the shoreline at this location, and their records indicate that several feet has been lost erosion over several years. So in the interim, the Property Owners Association is seeking to implement a more modest project to protect this specific section of Chippewa Chaw when the loss of shoreline eventually reaches part of this road. The proposed solution comprises the installation of a subsurface natural stone revetment wall located adjacent and parallel to the road edge. The length of the revetment wall will be approximately 130 feet and comprise the installation of natural stones of about 6 inches to 30 inches in size at an angle of around 1.5 to 1. This wall will be installed completely below existing ground level, and then the area above that wall will be restored to original grade. Once this disturbed area has been restored and vegetation established, there will be no visible trace of this structure. The wall itself will be located entirely within the Association's right-of-way. However, excavation to install the wall may encroach beyond that right-of-way, and the District does have an agreement, or seek an agreement with the adjacent landowner should this occur. The lines on the plan on the image there are GIS lines for presentation purposes, but we have performed a topographic, a boundary survey to locate those lines of ownership. So the area of the proposed work is currently maintained as mown lawn and landscape with several switchgrass plantings. The current elevation of land at the project location is between 4 to 5 feet above vertical damon, which is about, which is about the 2-foot elevation of Keneka DEP's coastal jurisdiction line, and also about the elevation of the nearby coastal resources located immediately to the east. These resources include a vegetated dune, high and low salt marshes, sandy intertidal flats, and an existing stone revetment. These resources are currently subject to the erosion at the edge of the maintained lawn, and so the area of that most recent erosion has become an isolated sandy intertidal mud flat. And you can see, that was a picture that I took in the fall of last year, and you can see how close that erosion has come to the wall. Sorry, the road. So the wall itself, I've got an image there of the wall. It will involve excavating a trench and installing natural stones between 6 inches and 30 inches in diameter. They'd be placed in a bed of smaller stones, set at an angle of 1 and 1/2 to 1. The actual wall itself will be about 6 feet high, although subsurface, and will start about 4 feet from the edge of the road to try and avoid undermining of the road edge. The excavation will then be backfilled with the native material that's excavated, and the disturbed lawn area will be reseeded with New England Coastal Salt Toleman Grass Mix. No excess soil will be stored on the site, and this material will be hauled away and disposed as it is excavated. This is the engineering site plan that was submitted as part of the application. So we did do a number of test pits, excavating along the line of the proposed wall. We didn't find any ledge, there were water, there was water recorded, recorded at depths of around 40 inches or so. So we do anticipate there being water in the excavation, which will be dealt with by pumping and conveyance through a sediment containment bag before discharging overland to the coastal waters. Additionally, the downstream areas will be protected by a sediment log, as recommended by town engineer. Project is expected to commence this spring, take maybe 2 to 3 weeks. We did receive town planner and town engineer comments, and also comments from the floodplain manager and DEP, and those have all been resolved. That concludes my presentation, and I'll be happy to try and answer any questions that the Commission may have.
Questions from the question?
I have a question, if I may. You mentioned that you might need, or you would seek permission or some kind of agreement with the adjacent property owner if the trench digging goes into their property. Is that correct?
Yes, so the actual wall itself, so this red line here represents the right-of-way line, so the actual wall itself is situated within that right-of-way, but, you know, the natural repose of the soils may mean that encroachment of the excavation does go into the adjacent property.
Are they aware, are they aware of this project? Have they already, have you already had discussions?
Yes, I believe the Fire District and the Property Owners Association have been in contact with that property owner, and they are aware.
Do you anticipate that they would have any objections?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. So you monitor the shoreline erosion. How long have you been monitoring that? What sources of information did you use to establish the baseline for what it was?
We haven't been monitoring, CLA Engineers haven't been monitoring, we've been involved with the project for about the last 6 months, but I'm told in our discussions that this area has been monitored for a number of years. And I'm not sure if you can see in this picture, but there are a number of stakes there. So a representative from the Association has been staking the limits of these, of the erosion, and I'm told it's been eroding several feet per year. And this isn't a linear thing, so one storm can come along, take away several feet of coastline, you know, and it really depends on the magnitude of the storms that are experienced on an annual basis. There may be little erosion in one year, there may be significant erosion in another.
So it's sort of the testimony of people that have been watching it and setting stakes in the field?
Yeah.
No formal survey?
There may have been some formal surveys part of the larger project that we haven't been involved with, but, you know, I think more of the monitoring, I believe, has come down to the asset owners themselves, which is the Association. And this is why, you know, the rate of witches is so alarming that they've had to introduce an interim project.
You can see that, you know, the amount of evulsion that's taken place there is significant. I'd feel a little better, I guess, if the extent to which it's occurred over a long period of time and the amount that's been lost was verified against like a topo source. Some of the old Yukon flights, or even some of the GIS mapping that the town has done, you know, goes back enough years where I think it would be useful in just verifying that you're not going out any further than you should.
Going out.
With the restoration, the restoration of the slope.
So this project doesn't attempt to stabilize the ground in front of that, it's just, everyone acknowledges that the erosion is going to happen, this will not prevent the erosion. The purpose of this project is, once that it's, once that it's occurred and has come within the proximity of the road, the purpose of the project is to stabilize.
So you're not backfilling that area?
Absolutely not.
Okay.
No, absolutely not.
Fine, no problem.
Sorry to.
Disregard, no problem.
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Any other questions of gentlemen from CLA?
The parts before and after the wall, do those increase erosion then? How aren't those affected? I'm always curious about that.
Like from the ends, I think you mean, right?
Yeah, from the ends, you know, what happens to that area?
Oh, the ends of the longitudinal section. So the length has been determined, so that represents the length there, this image here. We couldn't really go farther to the north because there's a very large and beautiful oak tree that we didn't want to get into. And then south, they, I believe the property line changes a little bit, and they didn't want to get into this gravel parking area here. So we really wanted to focus on where this erosion was happening.
Which is closer to the shoreline, too.
Yes, exactly. It was where, you know, where the erosion is occurring the most. So, so your question is, what happens beyond these limits?
Yeah.
Well, it's protected by more, there's a natural stone revetment here, so we're seeing very little erosion in this area here. And then because, you know, the further, it really is only this localized section here where the road alignment becomes, you know, because the road alignment veers away from the coastline.
Right, yeah, you've got further distance from the actual wave action and shoreline. Is this a limo?
Oh, what, sorry?
Wave actions of?
I'm not sure the answer to that question.
It's VE.
VE?
Yeah.
Yes, it's in the VE.
Okay, so it's understandable that it's caused by wave action, driven by wave action. Okay. Any other questions? Okay, Clifton?
No, all outstanding comments have been addressed.
They have, okay. It's the Commission's pleasure on Coastal Area Management Review application of Mason's Island.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the Coastal Area Management Application of Mason's Island Fire District with the following four recommended stipulations. Number one, any proposed alterations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the floodplain manager, CT DEP, or town engineer shall be subject to review and approval by the town planner and commission as necessary. Number two, final plans shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number three, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the Commission and reported in the town's land evidence records. And number four, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a revivable letter of credit meeting to requirements of ZR 15.4.3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures that's provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Work shall remain bonded for a minimum of 1 year from the date of zoning compliance.
Motion approved with four conditions by Ryan, thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Seconded by Gary, thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Any abstentions? The Chair abstains. Motion passes. Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Okay, before we move into item A, which is public hearings, just explain how we conduct public hearings. The, we have 3 public hearings this evening. The Commission will vote after each presentation and open the next public hearing. The applicant makes a presentation, the Commission will ask questions, staff will have input, and we will open it up for those who wish to speak for, against, or just make a general statement. If you would like to speak, there's sign-up sheets that Clifton is placing in the back of the room. You don't have to sign up in order to speak, but it's more orderly if you do, and gives us a better record of who spoke. So if you would like to speak during each one of the, any one of these sessions, please, please sign up at the back. So first item, continued from our January 21st meeting, application number PZ 244, SUP Tate's Package Store, A. Koalinko PE, represents Tate's, and the item was tabled at our last meeting, so we need to remove it from the table. And all the regular members of the Commission will be seated on all of these public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to reopen the public hearing for PZ 2442, SUP Tate's Package Store, A. Koalinko PE.
Motion to reopen the public hearing by Ryan, thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Mr. Morrison, thank you. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Chair abstains, motion passes. Is the engineer present to represent the applicant?
Yeah.
Good evening, sir.
Andy Koalinko from Engheim Consultants.
Welcome.
Hi, I'm here representing Mr. Mohammed Khan and his package store, Tate's Package Store, or Tate's Liquor Store, which is in existence at 372 Liberty Street. Everybody see this okay? You want me to move it? You're good?
Excuse me, just one second. If anyone from the audience would like to take a look at this, they're free to walk around the back here while the presentation is being made. Please proceed, thank you.
Pass around after 2:00. So this is an existing store, and we are seeking SUP approval for a modest addition to the side of the store. Addition's one story, about 952 square feet. Mr. Khan wanted to be able to stock additional product because right now he's sort of limited in space, wants to be able to put more product on the floor, helps him with warehousing and things like that. We had a few meetings with the town, and while we could meet the bulk standards in terms of setback coverage and parking, the biggest issue seemed to be addressing sort of an unorganized entrance and exit to the site. There's a private road banker court on one end, Albert Court on the other end, and as it stood, there was an entrance here and an exit here, and both the engineer and the town was sort of concerned about how that was all going to work. So after several iterations, we came up with this plan here, which narrows the existing island and, excuse me, creates an ingress on this end, an egress onto Albert Court, and then the cars can queue out here. And these were the bulk of the issues that the town had and the engineer had. There were a couple others that had to do with drainage, and they've all been addressed. So I think at this point, we have a design that we're satisfied with and the town is satisfied with, fairly simple. That's it. Any questions? It's fairly straightforward.
Does anyone have questions of the applicant's engineer?
I do. I'm curious, and you may have it on there, and I can't see it at a distance here, so is there any new traffic signage that's going to be directing people into this pattern?
We met with the police commission, and they had said they may want some signage, and I said I'd be happy to put in signs, and they told me they'd tell me what they were, and they haven't told me yet. So I think that could be a condition of approval, and I circle back with them. I would assume they're going to want something that says one-way or entrance and exit, but I tried to suggest stuff, and they said, no, we'll tell you, so.
Yeah, and I'm just concerned, just looking at your map here, I see on the one-side street to the right there where you come in, you have your...
Here.
Yeah, and it looks like you've cut sort of that, I would be worried about people coming down that road and trying to go on the livery while somebody's trying to pull in to your...
Yeah, the problem we have with extending that is that extends out past property line. So if that were to be extended, we'd have to get permission from the DOT, and I don't know if that would happen, so I wasn't able to draw it that way. This is existing, so I could only go to the line.
Okay. Did you say you were narrowing that island between the road and the parking lot?
Yeah, we narrowed it here to give more pass. Yeah, we narrowed it here to give more passage here, because it's pretty narrow right now, and if, if cars were parked in here and try to back out, it would impede the flow. I drew like a diagram here, which kind of shows how it would work. And this, this is a fire truck, I wanted to demonstrate that we could meet radius concerns about a fire truck going in. So, you know, flow in this way, out this way, queue over here, parking here, stop parking here.
What's the angle of the parking, the one-way parking in front?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. It looks like it or not.
Sorry.
Thank you.
Is there any additional lighting that you're going to put on that side now that you have the, the angled parking there?
I'm, I'm not proposing any, any additional lighting.
Okay.
How about landscaping?
We have, uh, there's going to be fencing, let's go back to the, back to this here. For the buffer considerations, we have fencing that's going to run along this side and down Banker Court this way, and then we've got, uh, a landscape, some landscaping here and some landscaping there, which are, let's see if I can find the species.
Like this in the, in the back?
In the back two corners.
The back two corners.
Yeah, there's really, there's not a good area for landscaping in the front. Was concerned about cutting sightlines down in the front island, didn't want to mess with that, so, uh, we could put something there, but-
Does it meet the landscaping requirements?
It does, it does.
I guess it's just really, it's, it needs to pretty that area up a little, but maybe, what, do you know what's going in the back in those corners? Are they big trees or are they bushes?
They are.
Is there a landscaping plan?
There's not a separate landscaping plan, but the species are identified. I'm not a landscape architect. They are Buja Occidentalis, which I think are similar to like an arborvitae type of thing. So there's three in, in this corner, three in this corner with multiple. I mean, it's just frankly not the most exotic site, we're just trying to make it look neat and tidy.
Might benefit from some additional landscaping there.
Exactly.
I think it's a good suggestion.
Yeah, I think even along that one road, too, to the top there, probably some to screen that, because that's going to be kind of a-
It's fenced.
It's fenced, oh, that is fenced?
You're talking about here?
Yeah. Is that already fenced there?
No, he's putting up a fence. See, you can see it on this one, see, like, there's this-
I mean, we could, we could work with the town on something at that.
Could you try to beat up the landscaping?
Sure, yep.
Exalken the look of the-
Sure.
Any further questions by the commission?
Well, Albert Court is a private road.
It is.
And you're going to have to go from a private road onto Liberty Street.
He, he has deeded right of way for that.
Okay, well, without traffic getting on to Liberty Street.
Getting on to Liberty Street? Well, this, this we felt, uh, in working with the town was an improvement, because right now this is open right here. So you have people going on and off Albert and coming in and out of the package store. So at least this way, we would limit the queue to one location rather than two. So we thought we increased safety that way. That was something that the engineer had asked us to do.
It's just that you've asked for waiver on the traffic impact study, and you're changing the traffic flow, so I just wonder if that's appropriate, and, um, did you justify that in any way?
Well, the, the addition that we're seeking does not contemplate any increased traffic flow, and clearly by consensus working with the town, we've improved an existing condition. Not sure that for something this modest, I, I think it would be a little bit burdensome to expect a traffic study for something this modest, where we clearly tried to ameliorate the problem.
So do we have all the waivers that have been requested in writing? And the rationale behind it? Thank you.
What's the amount of additional parking spaces because of the addition?
We had to add three. Two and a half, but you have to go on.
So the justification for the waiver is there's no increase in parking and no increase in traffic?
There's no increase in traffic, and we've improved an existing condition.
Based on the fact that there's no increase in retail space?
Right, well, no, there is increase in retail.
Where foot increase, how can you not be, why would you increase your retail space if you're not-
Yeah, you can increase traffic without increasing the number, without increasing the number of spaces, the number of vehicles per hour is probably going to go up.
Right.
We don't, we don't think it is.
So you don't, you don't think you're going to have more customers?
We don't, no.
Oh.
No. This was, this was done just, like I said, so that he could stock more. Right now he's very limited on what he can stock and what he can put on the floor, you know, and so by making this little addition, he'll be able to at least buy for a week instead of buy for three days.
But did you say you're increasing retail space?
We are increasing retail space.
So, so it is going to, I mean, I don't know, logically, that would tend to think you're going to have more people coming if you have more retail space, right?
Theoretically, I mean, I suppose if you build it, they will come, I spoke about, but that's sort of not where-
I know we've had issues with this whole stretch of Liberty with other projects, and traffic is one of the biggest concerns people living there have. And to be honest, I would like to see a traffic study done of this. You're increasing, you, you just admitted you're going to increase likely the people coming to the store, which is fine, but I'd like to understand that better. I appreciate what you've done with the design, but I would feel more comfortable with a traffic study.
And they may comment also on that, that partial island on the end that, that you've talked about. It is, I'm surprised that there's an increase in retail space, there's no increase in parking. Is it because you had excess parking?
Yes, there is, there's three more spaces.
Okay, so there's an increase in traffic?
Yeah.
No question. No question, on a busy street. Any other questions from the commission? Clifton?
Well, I just, is this a complete application test? If you don't have justification for no traffic study, are we, are we good to go? Is this a-
We just discussed this, you're right, there has to be a justification for a waiver.
Well, they said they, they put a justification, you said they had one in there, but there, if I understood correctly, your justification was you did not foresee an increase in traffic.
Well, that was not my only justification, I think clearly we improved the existing condition.
So it's twofold, what you were saying, your justification is you improved on a current situation.
This wasn't done in a vacuum, this was done in concert with what the town was looking for.
I understand that, yeah.
Attorney Sweeney, you can address this?
Can I, can I ask a quick question? Would you be able to point out where are the new parking spaces? So I drive by this space all the time, and it is a limiting factor, like you're, you, once the five spots in the front are taken, like, nobody else is going in there. So where are the new-
The new spots are in the back.
And are those the three that are, that you said are dedicated for the staff?
Two, three, there's, there's three for the staff back here, and there's actually two spots here as well.
So the three for the staff that are new, where do the staff currently park?
Currently parked in the front.
In the front.
So they're going in on Liberty Street.
They're going in on Liberty Street.
Five, five spaces there, to your point, Mary Ann, I'm following it.
Yeah.
And when those five spaces are taken-
I've seen people park on, I've seen people park on Banker's Court and leave their car, like, on the side. Then, then, so by providing more, I've seen people get very creative with where you park once those spots are up. I've seen people park right in front of the berm that you see there and locking in three cars.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so, so the addition of two potentially does limit the amount of where, especially where they are, does appear, and just from me driving by there all the time, appears to, to limit where you would have legal parking occur. And also just having everybody come on, sorry, on Albert Court rather than going right onto Liberty Street, like, you can have two cars trying to come out at the same time. So just following along with what, with what they're saying. I just didn't know where the three new spots were.
Thank you, Mary Ann, very helpful. Any other questions or comments by the commission? Clifton?
Mr. Chairman, if you'd like to respond as well.
For the record, my name is Bill Sweeney, I'm a land use attorney and partner at the law firm at Tobin Carberry. I was not involved in the preparation of this, um, application, too, but Mr. Khan's been a client of my firm for over 20 years and well-respected, well-known package store operator throughout southeastern Connecticut. I've probably done a dozen transactions with him on package stores over the last 20 years. He did ask me to appear tonight, just on the issue of traffic, a, a couple things. The need for a traffic study, I don't think is, is here. We're, this is a very, very modest addition. If you've gone out to the site, if you're familiar with Tate's Package Store, this package store is basically a single-room package store. Mr. Khan ran it for a number of years, and a few years ago, he actually sold it to a young couple as part of his moving some assets around. It was so small, and it was so difficult to run by sort of a, a less experienced operator, that he was actually forced to have to take it back. And so he's now the owner of this package store again. Reality is, it's so small, there's literally no storage space at all. What you see is the storage, and so it, it creates major problems for him to actually run and operate. The proposal here is a very modest addition, I think the total square footage, I think you said is around 950 square feet. Majority of that will be for storage, so he does not have to buy literally from his distributors on a daily basis. There will be some additional, um, retail space, floor space, but what is that going to be for? He's trying to expand and improve his line. Right now, he has very limited selection, it's primarily beer with some wine and some spirits. With that additional space, he can really expand and diversify his wine offerings and his spirits and increase the entire level and the quality of the package store and make it economically viable. And I would suggest that your plan of conservation and development does have sections that promote the retention and the enhancement of existing small business. This is a great example of that. This is the antithesis of sort of the total wines package store that's sort of spreading throughout the state. This is locally owned small business, and I think it's something the commission should support. We worked really closely, I know my client and, and his engineer worked really closely with Clifton and Mr. Greenlaw, the town engineer. There will be no employee parking anymore in front of the store, that employee parking will be shifted to the rear. In fact, the number of employees at the store is very small, but your regulations require a certain number. So we'll have now the parking for customers up front, and we'll also have overflow around the side. We're also putting that fence up along the private road to the right on the screen, screen, so we will prevent people from parking and sort of walking through. And we'll now, using Albert Court as a dedicated access, egress point, will really prevent what is sort of the open curb cut. And this is the problem, I think, that's on Route 2, that's, that's so significant, is you have undefined curb cuts, you've got sort of an end of curb, and then you have this expansive pavement that goes on, and you don't know where the cars are coming out, and that's the situation you have there out there right now. So Mr. Greenlaw and, and Mr. Eiler were very, very focused on us, and they instructed us to modify the, the site plans to create defined ingress and egress locations. So, you know, couldn't you, can I get a traffic engineer to say that's safer? Yeah, sure, we can, that's just a cost to a small businessman to get a traffic report, even a simple one. But I think what you have here is you're directed by your own town engineer, create defined access and egress points. And the way we've shaped that with that island creates that queue. Can you put up that queue, the queuing board again? Because before, you'd have people leaving directly from the parking lot, you'd have people going out onto Albert Court, you'd have people going, trying to get out on Liberty Street any possible way. Now what we do is we route them through the site, through that S-curve, and out to a defined exit point, which we think is significantly safer. Clearly, there's an issue of site, the, the sightline issue is better when you have a single point rather than multiple points along the same path. So again, ultimately, it's your decision whether to waive the traffic study or not, but really, I think it's your, your own town engineer instructed us to this design. This design, and our engineer can attest to this, is actually his design that we've adopted. He asked us, and so did Mr. Eiler, asked us to do this as well. I think, again, these are minor, these are a very small and modest addition to a small business here in town. We certainly think it meets your special permit requirements. We think a traffic study would be overkill in this situation, but ultimately, that's your decision. So I just wanted to thank the opportunity to come up and share my thoughts.
Thank you, Bill. I wouldn't see us asking the question of the traffic report as a lack of support for the application, I think.
I, I don't think so either, but the question-
Anyway, you know, I mean, we do, we do do our best to support businesses of all size here, and, you know, asking the question shouldn't be viewed as a lack of support.
And I don't think it is, but I think there needs to be recognition, that when you ask for those additional works, there is a cost to a small business person. And then if you have a 900-foot addition, and like, half of that will be new retail space, so 450 square feet, how much new traffic generation is actually out of that? Our position, the position of Mr. Khan is, is that he's going to serve his existing customer base, he's just going to serve them better now, because they're just going to have a better variety, a better selection. It's not just going to be 10 bottles of wine or 10 different types, he can do 30 or 40 because it's a little bit bigger. Don't think it's a, it's a sizable or material change in the traffic when you look at Route 2 and all the traffic it carries. If you decide that you need something substantiating that, we can provide that to you, but I don't think it changes the calculus at the end of the day.
I have a quick question. What is the current size of the building, square feet?
I think it's about 800 square foot.
And so your, your mod, your modest addition is more than doubling the size of the building?
Yeah, but most of it's storage space and not actual retail space.
I was just wondering about the absolute-
Like, literally, right now, if you get like a, a case of, of wine that comes in, it has to sit on the retail floor in Tate's place, because there is no back room. It's literally a square box, I've been in there a couple times, so I've had to do liquor permits there. Now you can actually store it in a storeroom in the back, so you don't have to buy every three days, you can buy every two weeks. Makes a big difference in terms of just operations and the viability of the business.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
Can I ask another question? So there's currently a porta john that's on the site? Is that, I don't see it on this map, is that going to stay?
No. Actually, it's a new restroom in the design for customers. Part of the new addition.
Any other questions from the commission, from the applicant's engineer or his attorney? Or the applicant? Clifton, any other comments?
Um, yeah, I'll chime in on a couple things. I'm just going to read, uh, section 16.2 regarding traffic impact study. It states that the purpose of a traffic impact study is to, quote, "prevent any reduction in level of service from existing conditions," with level of service being a qualitative measure of traffic flow efficiency based on anticipated vehicle delays. I think the impetus to require a traffic study has to be under some basic assumption that you're having a lower level of service as a result of the business or a result of the action being taken. I don't think anyone could look at, regardless of the application, an increase of 1,000 square feet without a change of use as being a substantial enough change to change the level of service of the road. As we've discussed with previous applications, the problems with traffic are not the, are not the burden of the properties that are abutting them. If there's a traffic problem on a state road, that's the burden of DOT, that's not the burden of each individual applicant to suffer the consequences of that traffic scenario at lower level of service.
So in other words, what you're saying, just that I understand it correctly, is that, that there has to be a driver related to level of service, and that would require much more generation?
Yeah, that's the, that's the implicit assumption as written in the regulations. Obviously, it is up to the discretion of the commission to identify what that is in the absence of data. But I also know that if you go to, if you go to get vehicle counts on, or average daily traffic volume, vehicle counts, you're going to go by the use, not the size. So although our parking regulations are dictated by the size of the structure, when you're doing a traffic study, it's going to be dictated mainly by the use of the property. Now, that's within some reason, if you have, you know, 20,000 square- Now, that's within some reason. If you have, you know, 20,000 square feet versus, you know, 2,000 square feet, that's a nominal difference, but overall, the way you're going to do it is by the use, and this is just going to be a retail use. So since there's no change, I don't...
Retail, storage, actually, right?
Correct.
But not substantive change?
So there's not a substantive change to the use. Now, the question the commission has to answer is whether or not the increase of the three parking spaces is substantial enough a change that it's going to negate or degrade the level of service on Liberty Street.
I think if I understood the commission correctly, it was more the turning movements in and out that were an issue. But I think businesses like this don't generate new trips, at least from my experience in this business. They don't generate new trips, so it doesn't increase the overall volume of traffic on the street. They draw up their sales from the traffic stream that's already on the street, and so it doesn't increase traffic on the street. But the turning movements on a road like this that are non-median divided are what's a concern. And I think that's what, but I do, I do agree that the construction of the island that channelizes flow and the use of the side street as opposed to almost unrestricted curb cut makes it a lot safer. Still might benefit from a traffic study, but it doesn't sound like we have a justification in our regulation unless this were big enough to change the level of service on the road.
Well, that's what I would infer from the regulations, but I would also add that regardless, this application, because there are changes to the curbing along Liberty Street, has to go in front of DOT review for an encroachment permit. And so if there is a, if there is a difference that they say that this needs to change for one of those reasons, they'll kick it back to design, in which case, one of the stipulations that we put on DOT projects, if there's any kickback, it comes back before the commission as well, so.
So if this doesn't go to OSTA, it goes to DOT encroachment?
It would go to District 2.
But they do a lot of the same type of review though?
And what Clifton has said is absolutely right. If they come back and they make modifications, because they say those turning movements that you're expressing are a concern, we have to come back here, and if you want to make it clear as a condition of approval, you have to come back here. You have to anyways, but if you want to make it clear, we have no problem with that before whatsoever.
There is a change in the traffic flow because the two existing curb cuts to access the site are both ingress egress. And so you're completely closing off one, and you're changing another to be ingress only. So the two, or the, three of the four conflict points that are currently on the site are being removed with this application. What, yeah.
Oh, it's good to see. It looks like stipulation 2 actually codifies that, if it would come back to us.
And that's if DOT says that that turning action, either the ingress only or the egress from Albert Court is a no-go, and then they would kick it back to design.
Thank you, Clifton. That's helpful.
Yeah.
Any questions, Clifton, from the staff?
I just want to reiterate, I would really like to see the landscaping beefed up a little bit, especially like on the side, on the side street. Is that Banker, Banker Court?
Yeah, Banker. It's to the north.
You know, I mean, we have that fence. Could you do that with landscaping instead, maybe, instead of a fence? I guess the fence is there so people don't park or walk, but could you do that with the Roarbar provided, or?
This is the log banker?
Yeah, where the fence is, this new fence.
Do we want to see a landscaping plan?
The reason we like the fence is because it eliminated people from trying to park there and come in, and we thought that was sort of a practical thing.
But if you have big trees there, they couldn't park there either? Like a provided or something?
I mean, with Roarbar provided.
What? I mean, personally, I would like to see, you know, in this little, this little grassy area right here, like put a tree there or something like that.
I agree.
I'd like to see more landscaping and to soften the look of that building, because it is right on the 2.
Is that something we can work with the town with?
I think so.
We'd be more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
So as a condition, that they develop a landscaping plan to be reviewed by the staff?
Yeah.
With the notes that commission...
Does that address your concerns, Lynn?
Yeah, I mean, I just, again, it was all about that curve and then going into Route 1 to Route 2. It's busy.
Yeah, it is.
And I'm looking at your graph, and I'm also seeing, you know, a car coming in, right? And then that car that's kind of backing out on your, on your diagram there, I don't know, I would hit it. Sorry, there's not a lot of...
We were just talking about landscaping, though. Are you okay with the?
As I said, I am.
Oh, okay. Any other questions, Clifton, from the commission? Are we good to move to public input at this point?
Yep.
Okay. I have one person who has signed up. That's just the applicant. Sorry. Anyone wish to speak either in favor or against this application? Either in favor or against, anyone wish to make a general comment on this application? Hearing none. Does the applicant wish any additional time, any rebuttal?
No, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for your time.
Okay. Commission has no further questions, so I believe the motion to close the public hearing is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to close this public hearing.
Motion to close. Is there a second?
I second the motion.
Given by Gary. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Gary. Any questions on the motion? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Public hearing is closed.
Thank you.
What is the commission's pleasure on this application?
Just to check, so Clifton, can I make a motion that includes the waivers and the special use permit, single motion?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve this application by Tate's Package Store and also for the special use permit and also the waivers requested. With the special use permit approval, with the following six stipulations. Number one, the applicant shall address any outstanding comments to the satisfaction of the town engineer and town planner. Number two, any proposed operations or modifications to the approved site plan as a result of comments from the Connecticut Department of Transportation, CDOT, or the Office of the State Traffic Administration, OSTA, shall be subject to review and approval by the town engineer, town planner, and commission as necessary. Number three, final plan shall be reviewed to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Number four, prior to the issuance of a zoning permit, the final plan shall be signed by the commission and recorded in the town's land evidence records. Number five, the applicant shall post an erosion and sedimentation control bond prior to the issuance of a zoning permit. The bond shall be either in the form of a certified check or a revocable letter of credit meeting the requirements of ZR 15 dot 4 dot 3. The bond amount shall be established by the town engineer after an estimate of the cost of installing and maintaining appropriate erosion and sedimentation control measures is provided by the applicant and approved by the town engineer. Works shall remain bonded for a minimum of one year from the date of zoning compliance. And number six, the applicant will develop and submit a landscaping plan to be reviewed by the town staff that will include the comments of the commission.
Motion made by Ryan to approve both the waivers and the application with six conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Morrison. Any discussion on the motion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Sheriff Staines, and the motion passes. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
Okay. Next item for public hearing. Do we have to read the legal ad here, because this has not come before us before?
Just reading the descriptions right now.
Okay. Secondary, read the next item for public hearing, please.
Yes, this is an open public hearing. PZ 2438 SPA Maple Lawn Farm LLC. Site application in accordance with previously approved master plan, PZ 2329ZC, to create a campus for food, education, and events. Properties are located at 343 Wheeler Road and another unaddressed parcel on Wheeler Road, Stonington. Map 94-1-4, 86-1-4. Properties are located in the AHD zone.
Thank you, Lynn. Is there anyone here representing the applicant this evening? Say your name for the record, please, sir.
Good evening. I'm Bill Burci, architect and Mercer Burci-Burnett Architects, Old Mystic, representing the project. And just very quickly, the agriculture historic, or heritage district is sort of a two-step approval process. The first was the master, approval of the master plan and the changing of the zone to AHD. And this second step, which we're doing tonight, is to submit a site plan that would describe and quantify any physical changes to the site that would need approval in a site plan. And that requires a Type 1, Type 2 site plan to do that. And you had a package, we submitted a package. I think there's five different drawings. And we'll just sort of go through some of the things that were addressed on the plans. Well, first of all, there, the master plan was approved with six stipulations, some of which affect the site plan we submitted that we've addressed. One, one was outdoor music, which would not be on the plans. Second one was alcohol service, which is not on the plans. The third was generator cooling noise pollution, which are not on the plans because they're handled in the master plan. But item four, that we would change the parking calculations, assuming two occupants per vehicle. That's addressed in these plans we're submitting. Also, stipulation five was to revise the parking layout with reinforcement methods. Gravel, how are we going to build the parking lot? And six was to provide a stormwater management plan or address the issue of stormwater drainage, which we have done. There's, I think, six drawings and three reports, letters that go along with the application. The first one, the planning and zoning officer office had requested, we have the wetlands flagged near the entrance road, so that they knew that the entrance road was more than 100 feet. It would not fall in the flagged area, so we hired a soil scientist. His letter's in the package. There is an A2 survey for the area involved that showed the 11 flags he put, and then the whole edge of the ponds are the other edge of the wetlands. And the principal site plan is numbered S 1.1. We carried that information over, and that shows the 100-foot upland area. And I believe the town staff determined that, you know, this was adequate to, not a concern. Second thing is, we adjusted the parking spaces for two parking spaces per guest, and that's described on S 1.1, where we have 175 guests, 14 staff, and four handicap spaces. We identified a small area over by the, by an existing barn for the staff to park away from the guest parking in on the site plan. The, and we had the FHA Hesketh consultants in a second traffic study. And their first traffic study, when we did the master plan, was based on 2020 volumes on the road. It was sort of during COVID, so they were concerned that maybe that represented a low traffic or maybe even high. So DOT had numbers in 2024, so in your package is a second traffic study by the same people. And basically, in one place, the numbers went up a little bit, and the other place, the numbers went down a little bit. Their conclusion was that their first calculations were significant, that they determined it was not a traffic problem. On this, on the submitted plan, we identified specific light fixtures, you know, what their lumens would be on the road. And on the site plan, there's a location for all of these. Say, the biggest light would be a 20-foot light bulb by the road with a single light fixture, and results in a half, half a foot candle on the driveway apron by the road. Lighting up the driveway are low fixtures, really just to sort of locate where the driveway is, because we don't have pedestrians walking up and down there. You know, we're not trying to light it for people to walk, but we want the cars to know where the driveway is. Otherwise, everything's, most of it's just low-level solar lights that can be turned on that day, that evening for the use. We called out the light fixtures on the sign that they'll be shining down, not up, as required. And then also, on, on the same picture, the same drawing, it has the light fixtures. We worked with the town engineer, and we retained H&amp;H Engineering to come up with the cross-section of gravel for driveways and parking and how that might be staged. And they talked with, the town engineer reviewed what we proposed the first time and had a number of questions, so we responded to those questions, and they talked about the site. We'd added contours, one-foot contours to the site, so we could see what the drainage was. And for a request by the town engineer, we put spot elevations for the, all the parking to guarantee that the drainage from the parking area would go out. There's, you know, one drawing dedicated to the drainage plans and, you know, contouring of parking. And then in this submission is a written report about the drainage, H&amp;H Engineering put together. One of the, I've got everything. One of the requests is, in the existing barn, the second floor, there's an office, and we were going to convert that to an apartment with two bedrooms, so that would put a little more load on, actually, it's the same load as the offices, but it's a different use, so it came under the jurisdiction of Ledgeline. So we went out and, in the field, determined what all the existed in terms of the septic system tanks and galleries, and been working with Ledgeline to accommodate the house. And it's been determined that we can have a separate system for the house, a separate system for the barn. And actually, and they didn't quite approve it, only in the sense they wanted some deep test holes dug, which were dug today in the frozen soils. So that might be a stipulation that that come back positive, but they, you know, they dug the eight-foot holes, and no, they were, they were fine, but we just don't have a letter that they're satisfied with that. So basically, the submission, there's the wetland scientists, talked about the wetlands, traffic study, and the drainage study, you know, were all addressed. And then the drawings that go with it. So that package describes, you know, in a sense, what we're, and actually, it's what we requested in the master plan. It was just putting it all together in the Type 1, Type 2 site plan with the engineering to back it up. So any question? And then all, town engineer reviewed everything. They had a number of comments, responded to that. They were satisfied with, you know, how we, you know, responded to this.
I imagine we have some correspondence from the town engineer.
Yeah.
Any questions from the commission? Have you concluded your presentation?
Yes.
So how many events a year are you going to have there?
About, probably not more than 10, other than major events. Some of the things are just theater workshops with eight people or something.
And it's served by a well?
What?
It's served by a well? There's well water?
There's two wells.
So those would be...
And they've been tested, you know, and approved.
As a public water supply?
It's not public water.
It's a transient water supply.
I'm not sure what.
I mean, it's a water thing. I mean, it's a water thing-
Fluid, it's-
In water? That would go through Ledge Light?
Has to be more than 10 per year.
As we already said, it'd be more than 10 per year, it's 25 people more than 10 times a year. So it'd be a transient water supply.
If it's more than 10.
But, right, so you'd have to just make sure with Ledge Light that they're okay with this being a public water supply, if that falls under that category?
Yeah.
For the number of people.
We had water tests and that stuff.
But it's, it's a permitting thing through the state-
Yeah.
To be, if it's going to, if it's going to be a public water supply, which it might be, you should check, look into that, because then it's, you have to get it tested a lot, not just once.
As far as I know, the catering can provide all the water for an event.
They'll bring in trucks of water? What? Yeah? They're going to bring in trucks, trucks of water for people to drink?
It's not a lot of water for drinking, you know, at a meal.
Right, I'm just, Ledge Light, that would be, that would go through Ledge Light at some point.
They're bringing in portable toilets with all their, with all those water supplies, though.
Portable toilets, okay. So they wouldn't use toilets in the barn? There's no, there's no facilities?
No, no, it's, it's called out there on the site plan.
I think whether you plan to serve it or not, you still need the certification if you're going to have the public in there. You still need that certification from Ledge Light.
Or the state public health, Department of Public Health?
Right.
For drinking water?
I'm not familiar with their department. I mean, that could be stipulated for sure.
Well, they wouldn't let you do it if-
Any other questions?
So how long, these events would go till 10:00 PM? No alcohol after 9:00, no live music, no amplified music, but they're-
Outside.
But amplified, there could be music, just not amplified.
Right, so I guess, by good time.
Should I make a point here?
Yeah.
I'm Paul Cerullo, I'm on.
Could you just come up and state your name for the record if you're going to speak, sir? Thank you.
Paul Cerullo, 343 Wheeler Road, Maplewood Farm, partnered with my wife Sharon. Ledge Light came out, they tested all the water systems on the two wells. There's plenty of horsepower with the water. Caterers to bring water and take all soil products off the farm after the major events. Small cooking classes are designed for the wedding party, basically, and the fundraisers that are held at the farm occasionally for, we do one annually for, more often scholarships at the Culinary Institute, and have been doing that for years. We agreed to 300, 275 people for weddings? 175, I'm sorry, 175.
175.
175 people for weddings, I'm sorry.
It's been out in the cold all day.
These conversations have all been had just in the AHD process, so as far as, as far as the entertainment is concerned.
I'm sorry to interrupt you, but I think the question was on the water. Is that what you want to speak up?
No, I wanted to speak up the entertainment.
Okay.
Yeah, I wasn't here for the other part, I wasn't here for the master plan, so.
We're limited to- No amplified music outside the structures, including the tent, so there can be amplified music in the tent, but not outside the tent.
And the master plan had a-
That's all been covered.
Sound plan. Good.
Any other questions of the applicant or the architect? Thank you, sir. Move to public, I'm sorry, Clifton, comments?
I went through it in my report, I just set, I just stated to carry over the stipulations from the master plan to the site plan, just so there's consistency if you look at it over time. The only one that I highlighted to remove was the hours of operation for liquor sales because the Department of Consumer Protection regulates that, and so I cited the general statute for that, so although the commission can't regulate alcohol sales operation, they can regulate the hours of use, so I just said, keep it consistent with the 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM, which is what you did for the master plan. And then the music was addressed, yet it was approved in the master plan for indoor amplified only within the hours of operation, no outdoor amplified music of any kind, so.
Consider a tent indoor. That's all I'm going to say, I'd consider a tent indoors.
Yeah.
That was what, that was what was approved in the master plan.
Right, indoors being a physical, indoors-
They said in the, they said in the master plan it would be in the tent.
Tents, yeah, I do recall that.
They did?
And we went through where the tent was located, just for, because you were here, and it's in a backfield, and they did a big sound-
Sure thing.
Study, yes.
There's some of the public comment, at the zone change application was, if there is amplified music in that tent, can it be heard? And so they did a sound study to see how far that sound would travel. So that was provided in the original master plan.
There's a decimal contours.
Yeah, they did the, it from the tent specifically. All the other comments from the engineer have been addressed. Ledge Light still has some comments that they're working with that they said, but those will be processed.
Did you want to add a comment about the certification of the drinking water?
Well, that would go through a building permit, they would have had a building permit or something.
Yeah, before they get any permitting from Ledge Light, that'll trigger the-
Okay, fine.
Yeah.
Any questions of Clifton from the commission? Are you okay to move to public comment?
Yep.
Okay, we have one speaker signed up, Richard Webb. Evening, sir.
Evening, Mr. Chairman.
Good evening.
Yes, I attended the February 24 zone change hearing as well. We had, I had significant questions, was assured that as a part of this type-two site plan application process, now a lot of the technical questions that I had would be addressed at this time. I have reviewed the drawings and all the data in the town file, and unfortunately, I find a lot of questions still remain unanswered, and I'd like to review them with you tonight. But before I do that, I think it's important to understand the context of this application. This is a farm, this is in a residential district, that now the zone change, which is a permanent zone change on the land records for this property, this zone change now allows commercial operation for profit use of the facility. So diametrically opposed to the, the character of a residential use, we now have, particularly with these large events, a, a profit operation. And I think it's important to understand that as we work through some of the questions that I, that I have now, and I have really just five areas of concern. Number one, starts out with some of the overall design components. We talked last February about the adequacy and the code applicability for handicap parking. We felt it did not meet code last February, and looking at the plans now, it's my opinion, it still doesn't meet code. Its location is wrong, it is surfaced now, which is an approved, improvement from last February, the location is wrong, there's not an accessible path to travel to the tent area, handicap parking has still not been, exceptably, per code, solved. The landscaping, there is a note on the plans along Wheeler Road that there is a 25-foot forest, event forest buffer that extends hundreds of feet to the north of the access road, extending north along, along Wheeler. What we have out there now are six five-foot-high arborvitae trees planted, and one of my questions is, is that the extent of this 25-foot-wide event forest buffer? Because if it is, I would submit it's woefully inadequate. The soil scientist reports that minor grading and drainage work done for the agricultural use and maintenance in the, in the areas north of the existing farm road were done, and I've reviewed, I've looked at that area from the road, this is the area essentially between the fire and the duck ponds and Wheeler Road. It's been disturbed, it has not been restabilized, drainage pipe and culverts were installed there, I don't know whether they received permits for or not. The pipe has now been removed, but the bottom line is the area remains exposed and not permanently stabilized. And so our question is, are the pipes going back in? What is the intent to restabilize this, this area? Because this area, again, is immediately, immediately adjacent to the fire pond and the duck pond. It absolutely is the 100-foot wetland, upland wetland review area for this, for this facility. The site lighting that is proposed, I was concerned last February in terms of some of the heights, and I think I understand why the applicant has kept the heights low, and in one sense, I applaud that. At the same time, I do question the effectiveness of the lighting, and I question it from a safety perspective for the, for the users of the, of the facility. And I would ask that if the lighting is to stay as submitted in the application, that to be a stipulation that any, if the owner in the future decides that this lighting is not adequate and needs more lighting, that any additional lighting come back in front of this commission? Because I don't think what's out there now is, is adequate from a safety perspective for the, for the safe operation of this facility. The second area I want to talk about is stormwater discharge, and there has been a significant change to the plans. We had a lot of discussion last February about how well you can park on grass, and we'll note now, the plans have changed, so that what the detail has, is for this entire parking area is strip the topsoil, lay down a geotextile fabric, put six inches of crushed stone ranging between 3/4 and 2-inch to give us a 40% void space in the, in the stone Two comments on this. Number one, this is based on, well, it's not based on any formal infiltration testing of the, of the subsoil. The statements in the plans and the documents talk about it meeting or exceeding existing infiltration rates, but we don't know that. And I've never, in my 40 years of practicing landscape architecture and site planning throughout New England, I've never had an infiltration mechanism, never, never had infiltration approved without a formal site infiltration study, test done of the, of the soils to confirm the adequacy. I'm not saying it will or won't work, what I'm saying is I'm surprised there's not been a formal infiltration test. But what this detail now does, it presents a whole other series of issues that I would argue the town, the community, and the commission need to address. We're going to strip topsoil, I don't know whether we're going to remove it or whether we're going to stockpile it, but it's going to total about 700, 700 yards of material. Concurrently, or along with that, we're going to bring in 700 yards of crushed stone. That, with the grading and the work associated with that, we are disturbing, per the latest plans, with the contours and the grading on them, we're disturbing about two acres of land. When you disturb more than an acre of land, that immediately puts you into the nationwide general permit classification, category, which is, which is a permit, again, it's a nationwide general permit when you disturb between one and five acres of, of area. It's a general permit titled for the discharge of stormwater in dewatering wastewater. That's what this is. This is Connecticut State DEEP. This is a state and a federal permit, it's not subject to discretion, it's a requirement, it's statute, it has to be addressed, it has to be adhered to. And part of that is the preparation of a stormwater pollution control plan, which includes specifying sequences, who is responsible, how much material is, is being put where, silt fence, hay bales, anti-track pads, all the erosion control measures that are needed to protect the construction activity, to protect the environment from construction activities. So the, the application drawing S13 is titled Drainage Utility Plan, Drainage Utility Map, excuse me. There's no stormwater discharge, pollution control measures noted on the plan, there's no details, and I would argue this omission has to be addressed. Again, this is, this is a requirement that is not subject to waiver request. It's a, it's a national permit that has to, has to be addressed. Item number three, traffic impacts. We questioned the traffic counts last February. The counts have been updated with these two new locations for 2024. The problem is the locations. One location is on 184, it's town line. The second location is on Tagwam, Tagwam, north of Summers Lane. And if we look at any sort of Google Maps, Waze, any of the apps that are out there now, for people coming from Providence, New London, Mystic, New, anywhere along the coast, all routes come up Tagwam and take a left on Summers. They are not going beyond Summers. So the traffic counts north of Summers, and the traffic counts on 184 over by town road, town line with North Stonington, have no bearing on what the traffic is going to do at this site. And I would argue, my concern with some of the traffic is less in terms of on the level of service components to it, it's more, more on the safety. We know how narrow the Summers Lane is, and we know how windy Wheeler Road is. Wheeler Road is 20 feet of pavement, posts on either side, one to two feet off the pavement edge. We don't even have a standard 26-foot-wide paved drive here, and we're going to ask people going to and from a party to navigate this road safely. Part of the, part of the traffic also has to do with, the plans illustrate 400-foot sight lines that extend from the entrance drive, point of entry to the site, extending to the north, extending to the south. Those lines are drawn incorrectly. They're drawn at the gutter line, which they can't and shouldn't be, they are drawn to the, the end at the wrong size of the road. My, my point is, there is clearing that I believe will- My point is, there is clearing that I believe will have to happen both north and south of the entrance drive, along Wheeler, to produce the 400-foot sight distances. And I would argue that this, the limits of this clearing need to be confirmed. The town staff, many town staff members have made recommendations. What I've not seen is a comment from the tree warden. This is a, again, a winding country road full of mature trees. I'd be anxious to know what the tree warden is, what his opinion is. Lastly, and this is probably most important, I think. We talked in February about an event management plan to manage the events so that the community is not unduly, and the neighborhood is not unduly impacted. When discussion started in February, the discussion was no more than 10 large events. Then it went to 20. I just hear tonight 10. So I'm really getting confused how many events, large events, are going to be allowed at this facility. There's nothing in this application that talks, that gives us the details of an event management plan. Who is responsible when you hit nine o'clock or at 10 o'clock? How do we know at 10 o'clock, lights are going off, people are leaving? How do we know at nine o'clock? And I would argue, the commission said nine o'clock on liquor. There was a lot of discussion about that. I'm disappointed to hear nine o'clock, it's now maybe becoming 10 o'clock for liquor. That's going in the wrong direction. But I think it keeps coming back to this event management plan, who is responsible? I think we've all been to enough weddings to understand it sure as hell can't be the caterer and it can't be the bandleader. So who is it? Is it the property owner? And if it isn't the property owner, what guarantee does the community and the neighborhood have that the property owner will enforce the rules and the expectation of this commission and the conditions of this approval? I would argue that, and we've talked about this with town staff, what are the mechanisms to set up some sort of control? And the only one that I can come up with is similar to erosion control bonds, which all your approvals have conditions on bonds. To implement the proper erosion control, I would argue, there needs to be some performance bonds placed on every large event to ensure that the guidelines and the expectation of the town, the community, and the neighborhood are met. If there's another way, I'm all ears. But I'm struggling with how do we all, absent the people at the wedding, how do we all have the assurance that these conditions are going to be adhered to? It goes a step further, as I talked earlier about this being a permanent change to the land records. When the current owners retire or sell the property to somebody, how does that somebody know what he or she can or cannot do? We have to put some, we have to put some guidelines on this so people don't get out of their swig lanes here. The neighborhood, there are six homes within like three, a quarter mile of this venue. There's 23 homes within three-eighths of a mile of this venue. And we talked last February about the idiosyncrasies of noise contours and how inaccurate they really are. And if anybody who's familiar with this area, no, you can always tell when we have a southerly breeze because you hear I-95. And when we have a northerly breeze, you don't hear I-95. So wind has an impact on noise. So none of that was addressed in February. What we did have was the insurance, assurance that it would be addressed, and we see nothing on it now. So I guess in closing, and I'm sorry to pick up all your time, I appreciate your time.
No, I just didn't listen. That's what we're here for. Thank you.
I guess, in my mind, the takeaways are, there are three takeaways. Number one, we need to ask for an extension from the applicant because there's missing data, there's incorrect data, there's data that needs to be revised and provided. We need to see that data. "We" meaning you all, town staff, neighbors, everybody. So asking for an extension essentially and keeping this public hearing open. Number two, similar to other town commissions, I would urge this commission, not today, two calls, but if there's a way that we can set up a meeting for you all to walk the site, look at the condition on Wheeler Road, look at the site. I'm not looking as, I'm not focusing as much on the area within the property, it's more on the approach, the impact of all these activities will have on the neighborhood as you approach and as you leave this facility. Schedule a site lock. I know Conservation Commission does it, or Inland Wetlands does it. I know it's a public hearing, a public meeting that has to be properly noticed. There's an awful lot of towns that I've worked with throughout New England who do this exact thing. And many times they'll even ask the applicant to say, all right, before we get out there to walk the site, we would like you to flag X, Y, and Z. We want to see that limit of clearance. We want to see where this fence is, where this tent is going to go. We want to see this so when we walk it, we're not guessing. I would ask that that, that be considered by this commission? And again, not today, wait for warmer weather. And thirdly, in addition to standard bonds for erosion control and site disturbance, I would ask that the commission condition any approval with a performance bond mechanism, some sort of event management plan that details who is responsible, what the terms of the event is to be, how many events you can have a year, have this all bundled. It's not that complicated a document. I was really disappointed not to see it in this latest application. But somehow, bond or set a structure in place such that the terms and the understandings that have been discussed are adhered to. Thank you. I appreciate your time. And again, look forward to further discussion, answering any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Webber. Anyone else wish to speak, either for or against? For or against, please? Or just make a general comment? I guess that's your third option. If you just state your name for the record, please. Evening.
Hi. Carol Nosick, Stonetown Acres, which is very close to this proposed venue. Beside the increased traffic on this rural neighborhood and the environmental impact, I just had some questions. So I also spoke at the last meeting, and I still, I've not seen any more information, so I'm unsure if these have been addressed. But this evening, one of the issues was that there is parking for 88 guest cars where 175 guests could attend one of the 10 events. What is to guarantee that 175 cars don't drive to this event the evening of? And where would overflow parking be? Can't park on Wheeler. Let's see. The other thing is, will the venue be held to 10 large events? And what is considered large? I mean, it's like, which side is the better of a fence? Depends on who's looking at it. Summers Lane, if you go by a GPS from 95 to the proposed venue, Summers Lane is the easiest and most convenient access. And I have a sign, there are no buses allowed on Summers Lane. Actually, school buses aren't even allowed on Summers Lane, and children have to be dropped off the top to walk to the bottom, or vice versa. As we know, if this is, it was mentioned, a wedding venue, many area hotels run, let's just call them party buses, to alleviate many people driving after the event closes. Will they be told to go out to 184, take the right, come back on Tagwak, and then enter 95, north or south? Summers Lane, which I drive 100 times a week, is, I have an SUV, it is about one and three-quarters width. So if one car is going and there's a little bridge area, car has to stop to let the other one go. So if there are no buses on there, that has to be addressed. How about the services that will be? The caterers, the dropping off of the porta-potties, the tables and chairs, will they also be told to go down to 184, back and back again to the venue? Is there room for large catering trucks, tent trucks, porta-potty drop-offs? Is, after an event, are there garbage services to remove all this? That's just a lot of, just like the gentleman that spoke, these are just things that red flagged for me as being a neighbor. And that's even besides the noise. And, you know, we all bought this area because it's rural. It was non-commercial. And I'd like you to take that into consideration. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on this application? Just state your name, please.
Dariane Stefanski.
Good evening.
Good evening, everybody. I am one of the six homes in that quarter-mile radius of the event, that potential event. And I'm very concerned about noise. I actually think my house might be the closest to the event. And when the wind does blow, I hear 95 very easily. I'm very concerned that I'm going to hear noise that's amplified inside of a tent, which we all know we've attended weddings, inside of a tent means that noise just permeates out. So noise is one factor. I'd like to know when the 88 cars are parked, will they be facing my property? And at eight, nine, 10 at night, when everybody goes to their car and they put their lights on, am I going to see the lights through the woods reflecting on my property? And that's really disturbing to me. I just think these are some of the things, being a homeowner, I was the first home in Stonetown Acres in 1996. I built out there because I wanted to be in the country. I love the land. I love the quiet. I love the peacefulness, and I'm really concerned. I just wanted everybody to hear that. I think if you were in my shoes, you'd be thinking strongly about some of the concerns. And Dick did a beautiful job talking about the numerous things that can occur. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else wish to speak? Yes, sir. State your name for the record, please.
Absolutely. Good evening. My name is Commander Ben Hinkin. I'm a submarine officer, based the last 20 years out of Groton, Connecticut, here and there.
Thank you for your service.
Yeah, appreciate it. So along with my wife Anna and our six kids, the oldest of which is eight, or eight and a half, if you ask her, we have made Stonetown Acres and Stonetown our home and pretty much our anchor for where we have been and where we want to be for the rest of our lives. I'm not going to sit up here and talk to you about how annoying or inconvenient Maple Lawn Farms expansion would be. That's just going to be me complaining. But I will ask you to think about the logistical and practical concerns Dick presented, the rest of our neighbors presented, and ask you to see, most of our neighbors have come to Stonetown Acres and Stonetown because of what it lacks, not what it has. Where we live now lacks traffic, which is vital for my kids' safety. It lacks noise and light pollution, which we all know is necessary for a healthy upbringing. And you all had some reservations about traffic earlier for one of the public hearings. And I ask you to, I don't know if it's on the record or whatnot, well, a couple years ago, so we are not a really thoroughfare area. So we're in between Al Harvey and Wheeler. And we had some issues with a lot of people cutting through our neighborhood, which is not really the most direct way. And so last year, we put up speed bumps for the first time in 25 years because people were speeding through our neighborhood where my six kids, Dr. Wagner and her four kids live, right? And so we take them out in the wintertime, obviously, so they don't get destroyed by snow. We have put up speed bumps in our non-thoroughfare community because of people coming through. And I question the validity of a traffic study that says, hey, there's going to be no meaningful safety impact to the community with 15, 20 kids, whereas there's no business there right now, but we've had to put these mitigation factors into place. So I question the validity of that. I wholeheartedly agree with Maple Leaf's, Maple Lawn Farms' right to pursue economic interest, to expand their business. But I vehemently disagree with doing it at the expense of our community. And I'll leave you with this. So I love Stonetown Acres and Stonetown so much that for the last two years, I left my family here and I circumphored the US of Greenville, which was in New Hampshire, at sea in California, right? I left them here because Stonetown Acres is safe, it is quiet, it is secluded, right? It is a great place, an amazing place to raise my family. I didn't want to uproot them from where we're at right now. And so I chose that. I sacrificed the last two years to leave my family here with Dr. Wagner and her kids and my amazing neighbor Bob, right, and his wife Carol, who we're very fortunate to share driveway with, right? So much like the neighbor earlier, I'm also one of the six houses that's within a quarter-mile. I invite you up to $30 drive on any clear day, any overcast day, you can hear the cows over on Al Harvey and you can hear I-95. And so much like the sound study, there's absolutely no way that a reasonable human being can see that there's going to be very little impact to the community and the houses around here. So just to put another face to the community that's going to be negatively impacted. I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Commander. Anyone else wish to speak? No one else, either for or against? Does the applicant desire rebuttal time?
Good evening, Christian. I'm James Moran, PE in Connecticut. I am representing the drainage, grading, stormwater components of the application. So this is the first time you're seeing me for this application, but I was able to speak with Mr. Trinkus, and we developed the stormwater plan. So just to pick off those two comments that Mr. Webb had pointed out, the infiltration rate, the only thing we're changing is we're substituting topsoil for crush stone. The subsoil is remaining the same. The geotextile fabric between the two ensures that silts, excuse me, silts from the surface aren't going to get into the subsoil. So with the only change being the crush stone versus the topsoil, the crush stone is more pervious than the topsoil. So we didn't do infiltration testing in the subsoil because the subsoil is not changing. So whatever the subsoil is, is still going to act the same way. So that's why we said better than or equal to. It will It will, the top layer is better than the topsoil, the crushstone's better than the topsoil, the subsoil is going to remain unchanged. So that's why we're saying it's equal to, we're not making it worse. We're allowing, if anything, if the subsoil is more pervious than the topsoil, which it generally is, it'll allow more infiltration into the subsoil. The second one is the disturbance. One to five acres of disturbance is a locally approvable project. It's only after five acres that it becomes a DEP general permit. So one to five is approvable by the local municipality and the commissions, under the site of the town engineers or whomever's reviewing it, and approved at the local, your commission level. So those are most of the two items. After five acres, it triggers the general permit for stormwater discharge. That's all I have.
Did you model the stormwater runoff before, as part of the master plan? Just refresh my memory.
No, no. So, and I wasn't part of the master plan. I was just brought on more recently to address some of the town engineer comments. So the consulting engineer, Mr. Trinkus, actually suggested that a more comprehensive stormwater plan has to be developed. So the conversation I had with Mr. Trinkus is that what we're doing is, you know, there's a gravel drive that's there that they're trying to maintain, to a parking area that will be replaced, topsoil will be replaced with crushstone. So there's no other improvements that we're proposing to the site. So doing a site-wide analysis for several dozen acres to demonstrate that the peak rate is not going to change, just seemed like it was costly for an applicant when all we're doing is changing essentially a topsoil surface to a gravel surface in the parking area. And he agreed that it was an insignificant change. And on top of it, what we demonstrated is that we're, the proposed grading that we're showing in the parking lot, any runoff that does not infiltrate into the parking lot, sheet flows into a meadow to the north, I think it is, to the north, and where it has several hundred feet to travel, and a, almost a very large vegetated swale, I'm sorry, vegetated filter strip. That's a DEP general, a DEP term for a low-impact development feature. If it's just essentially lawn, it allows it to infiltrate into the lawn, treat, gets treated into the lawn area and absorbed by the nutrients. The nutrients are absorbed by the vegetation. So with those items, he was happy with the changes to the plan.
So you're talking about Trinkus, our consultant, right? Do we have a report from Trinkus?
Yep. Yeah, his comments are in there. Then Seamus's responses are, go line by line to his comments.
That would be of interest to you, Mr. Webb, some of your comments.
Do we have a response back?
Yep, and that's what I just passed out to you.
You have a chance for comment, but I think you should take a look at that.
Please. So I think those are the two stormwater items I just wanted to touch on.
Are you responsible for the duck pond and the fire pond issue that was brought up? Is that in your purview?
I'm not privy to what's going on with, honestly, it would be nice for that comment to be elaborated. I don't quite understand what happened, or if there are.
I can answer that later.
Mrs. Sorillo.
Thank you.
We'll probably talk to that.
Thank you.
You will get a chance to speak.
Again, Bill Marchie. And just to clarify, the four-hundred-foot sightline came out of the Traffic Engineers' report. You know, it wasn't something that we walked out and drew the line. I don't know where he drew the line, but we drew a line on the plan to show, basically, this is.
Was that done by Huska?
Huska. Right. So in the first report, the one last February, you'd find it, reference to the four-hundred feet. And also a question, the tree warden, somebody asked about the tree ward, we're not cutting a tree down anywhere. So.
I think the suggestion was that, in order to achieve a clear line of sight on that line that's been drawn, trees will have to be cut.
But Huska's determined that with the trees in there.
We did consult with the tree warden as well, about what trees needed to be, what trees had to stay, because it is, Dex is going to get into scenic road because of some of the trees that are there. So we did, we did ask for that, have that consultation.
There were also some comments made, I think in Mr. Webb's presentation, about upland review areas that have been impacted.
Yep.
I don't know if you care to comment on any of those, but upland review is not under the purview of this commission. So, you know, we would be overstepping our bounds if we became involved in complete review issues.
I can partially comment on that.
You don't have to make a rebuttal, because there's not, we really have no jurisdiction in wetlands. Public Act 155 clearly establishes the fact that the towns can regulate inland wetlands. They have to establish an inland wetlands commission, or it diverts to the state. And in this case, the town established an inland wetlands commission. So you would have to take those concerns to the inland wetlands commission.
We, so, I put that in my report. I consulted with the wetlands official, and we have studied, well, we requested firstly the soil study to confirm where the wetlands were located on-site. And then, secondly, we reviewed that document, and the wetlands official determined that the scope of the work and the work being done, one, with fault, fell into an exemption, because the majority of the site that was in the URA was for agricultural use. So the duck pond is an agricultural use. The second part of that was, the area that was impacted the most was actually the curb cut to the street that was being widened and paved. That was a requirement both by the director of public works, as well as the police, to one, widen and pave that. So that kind of falls under general maintenance, as listed in the wetlands regs. So she found that this application didn't need to go in front of the wetlands commission. And that was the only area under scope for the application, was right at the front there.
Thank you. Anyone else wish rebuttal time? Yes, sir. We know who you are, but for the record, just state your name again. Thank you.
I think it's time for a little bit of history here. I know it's late, and I know it's cold. Eight years ago, thereabouts, thirty of us, approximately, that owned product, farm properties like ours, that had X number of acreage, had been historic properties or are historic properties, and they'd been in the agriculture business for X number of years. The land that I'd bought twenty-five years ago was in agriculture when I purchased it. And the research I've done, and extensive research, is it's been in agriculture since the seventeen hundreds. The Wheeler's direct descendants owned it from sixteen eighty-seven until Grace Dennison Wheeler passed away in nineteen fifty-one as a centenarian. And then the property got sold and split up, and Stonington Acres was created. But the remaining acreage stayed in agriculture. There's been sheep farms, horse farms, cattle farms, and far operation, which is, I have a collection of three or four different attempts at agriculture. When we were invited to the meeting, it was explained to us at a presentation by the town at the Legrua Center in Stonington Borough, that if we signed up for the Agricultural Heritage District, and the purpose for that district was to keep these farms from putting solar fields in, cell towers in, pig farms in, there was a reason they did it. They wanted you to, they knew you had to make a living. They knew you had to support the properties. But the only thing they told us we couldn't be in at that meeting was gas stations and RV parks. Fundamentally, they said B&amp;Bs, inns, outdoor dining, events, just like the two properties that signed up for this before us, the Valenti property and the Simmons property on Route One. They went through the same process I'm going through. It's been four years we've been involved in this conversation. And we did it because it was a good idea to do it. And a dozen or so wedding functions on the weekends is about the only way you're going to make enough money at this, to pay your taxes, your insurance, and keep it going as that, or you develop it. You really don't have any choice. So we went through the process, we were put into the Agricultural Heritage District, and we've kept as many acres in agriculture or open space, including the whole of the twenty-four acres on the east side of Wheeler Road. You know, we just keep having this conversation. We know that we have a responsibility to host events there in a very social justice way. I've been in the event business my whole life. I've managed the Olympic Games in Korea, Calgary, Canada, PGA events, horsing events, all over the world. And I understand what a good management plan is. We mentioned at one of the prior meetings that we're living there. We're going to be resident at these events. The Valentys don't live on their property. The Simmons don't live on their property. We live on our property. We will manage this. My children were in the restaurant business their whole lives. One of us will be there, I'll commit to that, at these events, that'll be represented by a family member or a family employee, in addition to the rules and regulations that we stipulated in our last meetings about not just time of service, but when the rubbish leaves the property, when the wet products leave the property. These conversations have all been had, for the most part. The reason for the two large pipes that were put in temporarily was, the fire department, a number of years ago, came to me and asked me to strengthen the way into the pond from the home side on the existing farm gravel road. And they brought in their sixteen-thousand-gallon tankers at eight pounds a gallon, pretty heavy vehicle, and they started to have trouble on the gravel. So they asked me to strengthen that entranceway, which we did, with purchased gravel and stone. The fire department came back to me a year and a half ago, the chief, and asked me, at the barway going out to Wheeler Road, he wanted to have the pumper truck come in that way, because it's a faster, more efficient way to back the truck in, so they can get the four-inch pipe to within thirty feet of the pond. We looked at it, and I said, "Well, I can do that, but you got to get me some gravel." He said, "Well, I don't want to bother the town with that." He says, "Would you mind strengthening the soils, so we can back the truck to within thirty feet of the pond?" In order for me to accomplish that, and I used a lot of my own stone product to do it, to strengthen the soils below the top layer, I had to, I had to be able to work in this soft product with twenty-ton equipment, and ten-ton equipment, and six-ton equipment, without burying it. So the pipe went in, we were able to dry it up enough to create the barway all the way to the pond, and then I removed the two pipes that went in temporarily. The pipe that's in there was a pipe that was installed during the construction of the pond twenty-two years ago. And then, the pond structure had to be strengthened for the fire truck, and to make sure the dam holds. Since we built that pond, the world is not washed out. And it's not washed out because we've trained the water to go to the bottom spillway pond, which is now an aviary, for the ducks. And we were in the endangered waterfall business for the last nine years. Unfortunately, the coyotes and the bobcats, which the state used to control, when I asked them to come down and help me with that, they said, "No, you can't do it, you got to use electric fencing." So the electric fencing isn't in yet, I'll probably have to get a permit to do that. But that was the purpose.
Sounds like a lot of the things you talked about, even though you're a farm, it doesn't give you blatant right to just go into the wetlands and do things without a permit.
No, the farmer has the rights to use his wetlands.
Wetlands?
An agriculture property has the rights to use their.
I'm not going to talk about wetlands. I have a lot of experience with wetlands. And there's a farm in Durham right now that's going through a rigorous process with the EPA, because they espouse the theory that you espoused. And EPA came in and told them otherwise. It doesn't give you carte blanche to go in and reroute streams and work in the wetlands without a permit. I'll just leave it at that. We do not have jurisdiction over wetlands here, so technically, you don't have to rebut the comments about the wetlands, because they don't enter our decision. We don't have jurisdiction.
Oh, I did, it is a criticism.
I referred Mr. Webb to the wetlands commission, because they do have jurisdiction.
That's fine.
They may not agree with what I said, but.
As far as removing the tree, the brush that was there, that was a request of the police department to improve the sightlines. And they came in and inspected what we did. The reason I put the arborvitae in, is there's six more arborvitae further north on that road that I put in twenty years ago for the same reason, to keep some kind of a buffer there, but not one that interferes with seeing the driveway coming up.
Understood.
I mean, we're very responsible. In twenty-three years, I've not had anyone come to the farm and say, "We've been nothing but good neighbors." And we've had events there, all for fundraises, not for making money.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to entertain anyone that wants to, legally. I know if you all came at once, it would be a public meeting, but you're welcome to come in less than.
It would be a quorum, for sure.
Oh.
Thank you. Anyone else wish rebuttal time for, we'll get to you on the first round of rebuttal. Hearing none, Mr. Webb, I know you want to speak.
For the record, Richard Webb, four forty-five Wheeler Road.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. And there were a lot of things that have been spinning around out here right now. I guess I'd like to highlight just three things. I am not saying that the new detail for the parking lot with the stone is not going to, I'm not saying it's not going to work. What I'm saying, there wasn't an infiltration test done, and more importantly, I look at the plans that are disturbing over two acres of current, undisturbed land, and there is not silt fence number one, erosion control blankets at all shown, there's no anti-track paths, all the components of a stormwater pollution control plan, which in the one-to-five-acre category admittedly can be handled at the local level, but it's an absolute requirement that you do this. It's not a question of who approves it and who reviews it. Over five, absolutely, triggered, goes to Hartford. One to five, it has to be done. And there is nothing on the plans, nothing, that illustrates any sort of stormwater discharge or stormwater pollution control measures for the project. Item number two, the four-hundred-foot clearing line, if indeed, as the applicant proposes, that no additional trees will need to be cleared along scenic, windy Wheeler Road, I would, that's all more reason to have a sightwalk. That's all more reason to get the flags out there, here's your point of entry, here's four-hundred feet away, here's the line, what can you see? And I hate to gang up meetings on meetings for you all, but I don't know how else, I walk this, walk Wheeler Road quite often. I think this clearing has to happen. If the applicant can demonstrate that there's no more cleaning they have to do to achieve the four-hundred-foot clear sight distance, so be it. But I would argue, from my perspective, they do have to clear more. And I think the commission needs to understand the extent of that clearing and how it will affect Wheeler Road and the neighborhood. The last item is, yes, I'm fully aware of this commission's role, and I used the phrase before, I'll say it again, your swim lanes and getting out of your swim lanes from a wetland perspective, which is why I went to the town and said, "We need to identify where the limits of the wetlands are." And part of this issue with clearing, and part of the issue with the driveway, is that they're all occurring within the hundred-foot wetland upland review areas. I understand that's not this commission's purview, totally get it. And I will redouble efforts, talk to your fellow commissioners at the inland wetlands agency to, or commission to, to get more involved.
We wouldn't be doing our job if we didn't send you to the right.
Totally, totally understand that. And we have, frankly, we have tried and just haven't really seemed to get a lot of cooperation as we talk about the wetland review components of this, of this project. So with that, I'm sorry, one last item, the driveway that has been paved. The driveway that has been paved, I find it curious that that was done this year after the zone change was granted, long since the pond, the duck pond and the fire pond are in place. And so I'm not sure what the purpose of paving this driveway was as a part of the fire department or police or any other town agency. I'm not sure what the...why they felt the need to do it. The only thing that I see the need is because it was on the plan that was required as part of this application for the events. It doesn't affect anything regarding the fire access to the pond. It only affects the access to the back part of the property, which is where the large events will occur. So I have to question that and along with that, as Mr. Chairman, you mentioned the project in Durham, it doesn't matter, it doesn't matter who is doing the work. If the state statute says you must get approval, then you must get approval. The town might have to get approval.
There's some very nebulous language in Public Act 155 that led a lot of farmers to believe that you can do anything you want on a farm if it was a farm.
Yes.
And the key language in the statute is it does not, you have, you can make certain uses as of right if it doesn't disturb the indigenous character of the Indian world. And there's been, you know, many towns read it one way, many towns read it another way. EPA reads it that certain activities on farms need permits. And I've seen that firsthand, so...
And I would argue, in terms of the applicable requirements for permitting, have nothing to do with who wants to do the work. If the town wants to do something, I've represented towns all over New England where the town is the applicant. They want to do some work, but they still have to go in front of commissions. So just because the town wants to do something, doesn't, again, give it carte blanche to do it without the required permits. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Does the applicant wish...I'm sorry, we have to go back and forth here until everybody's said their case. Does the applicant wish any more rebuttal time? The applicant rests. Clifton, any comments with regard to...I know the town engineer has reviewed these plans and has recommended approval with conditions.
Correct. So what I passed out was the sign off from the town engineer and the town engineer's consultant, that they're okay with the comments and responses as provided. The only thing for the commission as they, you know, deliberate, the applicant has another 39 days available for extension. So if the commission has requested changes or updates for the applicant, the applicant has to consent to those.
One question I have, and I do note this, I probably should have raised it earlier, but the plans do lack a sediment erosion control plan, which most plans have if they disturb over one acre. And I'm wondering why that's the case? Why this, there was no waiver requested for it? And it's clearly a requirement in our regulations for disturbing, I think, over one acre. I may stand corrected on that, but I think it's one acre if you're disturbing over one acre.
I'll let the applicant respond to that, but the only area being quote unquote disturbed is that parking area.
We may, we may want to include, and the reason I raise it is we may want to include as an additional condition that the applicant prepares a sediment erosion control plan.
So if the commission is willing to entertain and extend, or if the applicant's willing to extend, that by the next meeting, they can probably provide an erosion sedimentation control plan in addition. So if you keep the public hearing open.
And they can, if they agree to it.
If they consent to it, so yeah.
I guess it's a question to the applicant as to, first of all, why, since you are disturbing in excess of one acre, you chose not to prepare a sediment erosion control plan, which is a requirement?
James Moran. So I was brought in after review comments were received, and one of them was not, the soil erosion sediment control. I think it was just an omission on behalf of the applicant when we first submitted that we missed the soil erosion sediment control plan.
So I think then the following question would be, would the applicant be willing to extend the hearing to the next meeting to have that plan?
Provide the plan, give it to the town engineer, have him incorporate it in his letter of approval, and, you know, the process continues. Because it clearly is a requirement.
Yeah, of course, that makes sense.
What's the commission's feeling on that? The regulations clearly stipulate, if you're disturbing over an acre, that you have to prepare that plan. We have it in every package we get.
Yeah, I agree.
I just don't, to the procedural thing, I don't think we need to ask the applicant if he's okay with that. I think we just say, we're going to hold it open until you give that to us.
Well, if the applicant says no, we can consider denying it, so...
Yeah, correct. Right.
Yeah, the request is...
I think it's always better to get cooperation if you can.
Yeah, the request is to keep the public hearing open.
Because if you put it as a stipulation or...
No, because I think they want to see that before.
I think there's some review required.
Yeah.
Does the commission feel comfortable with that?
I do.
Commissioner Marston?
Yes. I said a couple, what about your comment on your report about the parking? Where it says revised traffic report and parking calculation based on two, when you talk about on the next page.
It's on sheet...
Oh, so they did that?
Yeah.
Because this was just dated yesterday, right?
Sheet S1, it's on the right side. So they updated it for the two spaces as requested at the...
Okay. So these have been, so your comments on your report dated today have been addressed?
Correct.
Does this date, yes?
Correct. The only comments I added were regarding the stipulations and the URA.
Okay.
If a site plan M is for 107 parking spots, but we only see 106, does the, should everyone be accounted for?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I just counted all of the ones, the 14, the fourth, the 88. So I was just curious.
Yeah, just verify that.
Verify the parking.
Any further questions? Hearing none, so the commission want to consider a motion to continue this application?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to continue the public hearing for this application to the next regularly scheduled meeting of the commission with the stipulation that the applicant, who has agreed to this extension of the public hearing, would provide a sedimentation and erosion control plan for review.
Motion to continue the application to allow the applicant to prepare and submit sedimentation erosion control plan by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Get it by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion?
I just want to make sure that we, in that continuation, we will address or be allowed to talk about some of the other comments made tonight in regards to Farmer's Avenue, et cetera, et cetera. I just want to make sure that we're not limiting ourselves to that.
The public hearing remains open. I think you have an opportunity to consider everything you heard tonight. And it's fair game if you have a question that comes up in a reservation regarding something you heard tonight and have to add a time, add a chance to consider.
I want to be sure. Thank you.
A good question. So any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion passes. Thank you. Move on to the next item on the public hearing agenda. And would ask the secretary to read the call of item 8C.
Yes, this is to open the application, PZ 2446 RA, Town of Stonington, zoning text amendment to...
Would you mind if we just wait till I've...
Yeah, sorry.
We still have one more item.
Are we going to... We'd like to open the application, PZ 2446 RA, Town of Stonington, zoning text amendment to incorporate cannabis regulations approved 8162022 into the 28th edition of the zoning regulations.
A motion to open the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to open the public hearing for PZ 2446 RA, Town of Stonington.
Motion open. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
Second motion.
Get it by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. The public hearing is open. Clifton?
Great. So as mentioned, both in the reg rewrite meetings with Francisco and FHI as well as at previous meetings, putting forward the cannabis regulations that were adopted by the commission on August 16, 2022, under PZ 2221 RA, that were approved by the commission but not incorporated into the 27th edition of the regulations and further were not included in the Phase 1 rewrite process. I've provided a memo with firstly, the recommended amendments for the 28th edition. And secondly, as a add-on or amendment to the back where it states, starting with Article 1 adopted text, this is all of the language that was approved back in 2022 but never added to the zoning regulations in any capacity. So it was still effective, it's effective document, but it was never added and it was never removed. So similar, as we've discussed with other regulation amendments, this is going to be formalized and put this back into the regs. So that's the overview. What I've provided is, you know, one restructuring, trying to eliminate, or trying to eliminate duplicate language, but also I highlighted three concerns or three areas in red in my memo. So hopefully you have a color copy of potential addition changes to the regulations in addition to what was already approved. The first one I have on page one here is regarding the use table. In the previous regulations, the commission never approved a zone, a zone for use for a cannabis cultivator or cannabis dispensary facility. And I couldn't, in doing due diligence, understand why that was. So what I did firstly was recommended putting the cannabis cultivator, which is the large-scale farming operation, in the LI 130 zone as a special use permit. And then secondly, mimicking the cannabis dispensary facility to mimic the cannabis retailer. And so they would only be located as a special use permit in the TC 80 and HI 60 zone. So that's the first proposed change. Let me get to the next one. And then the second one on page two is regarding floating zones. Under the previous regulations, there was a weird inconsistency where cannabis was allowed in the NDD zone, but also not allowed in residential developments. And the NDD requires you to have residential on site, so there's an inconsistency. So the recommendation was to be more conservative and just not allow it in any floating zones. So that's that change. Everything else was just trying to fit it into our new format. I do have one spelling mistake in the use definitions with if approved, I'll amend appropriately. And that's on cannabis retailer, if there's interest in discussing it.
I have a question. It's mainly just a planting thing. So when it says that they're not allowed within floating zones, if we don't put that in at all, isn't that the sort of saying the same thing? Or like, wait, like, it's just a question?
Correct.
You want it to be clearer?
I wanted it to be clear because the inconsistency with what was approved was it was allowed in one floating zone. So if we're going to change it, I wanted to highlight it for the benefit of...
All right, that was just a legal word of question.
If we delete it, then it would...
They're automatically not allowed in any floating zones.
Correct, because I would say that since there is a residential use in an NDD zone, it wouldn't be allowed.
I think it's good to just call it out.
Yeah, no, it's just one, it's just a legal question on selling.
Any questions, or Clifton?
Yeah, so when we had structured this regulation, the commission at the time took a very conservative approach. And we limited, we did, we made a conscious decision not to allow the cultivation because it was not required by the state.
Okay.
So that's why there's not an area that says you can have it. Because at the time, right, you had to, right, have, you had to allow the retail. I believe that's how it was, the retail. And we said, okay, we're going to stick to the letter of what we have to have.
I think that's what was voted on too by the town.
And that was voted on by the town very specifically. So the dispensary and the cultivation were not part of what came out by the state.
Okay.
And that's why we eliminated that. So I think, based on that, the first, the first one for the cultivator and then the second one, the dispensary, I think we purposely did not put those in.
Yeah, and I'm just asking, because I remember we were talking, remember the dispensary discussion we had with somebody who's the medical portion of it, if I'm not mistaken? Okay.
I remember we talked about grout and having one, etc.
Yeah, the lady actually who ran the grout.
Very big, yeah. And so we worded actually the regulation very carefully when it went to town vote, too.
Because that town vote was just what you said.
So since the regulations have quite often changed when it relates to cannabis, I can go back and verify that that is not a requirement, but...
That's my recollection.
I could just report back.
I would, excuse me, I would like to, to make sure that our recollection is clear, but I remember it exactly the way you do.
I wasn't here for it, and my position is 180. I think that we should allow cultivation and dispensaries.
I remember it exactly that way.
But I wasn't here for that discussion.
It wasn't required, and we elected to leave it out intentionally.
I would put them in.
So consensus of the commission to not include that change?
It's not my consent.
It's general. General. All right, we have that. A lot of what's on pages two and three is really trying to consolidate what was repeated like 20 or 30 times in the previous regs into one. So under the permitted establishments, limited one cannabis retailer or cannabis hybrid retailer. So that use, it's an either or, you get one of them in the town. And then I wrote it out, but there's one of everything else. So two total establishments, one of each type. But that was basically what was spelled out through the rest of it.
It's interesting because it says agriculture here and then it says this does not include the cultivation of cannabis.
That way, if somebody's coming in with an application or a use to do an agricultural use, which is largely primarily by right, you can't loophole that into saying, I'm doing cannabis now.
Right, okay.
So that's purposefully called out like that to make sure nobody can abuse that loophole.
Okay.
So I'm, what is the difference between a retailer and a dispenser? So I'm, what is the difference between a retailer and a dispenser?
So the retailer, retailer is a lot licensed to purchase it, and then like it's as a distribution, the dispensary dispenses it to the general public.
But it says a hybrid retailer, a business that is licensed to purchase cannabis and sell cannabis, and medical marijuana products.
To consumers and research programs. That's, that's the way it was in the statute, and that's the way it was in the old regs.
That's not what it says here, so.
You think the difference with a cannabis dispensary, I see it called out specifically?
Right.
CGS chapter 420F and the other, the hybrid retailer does not call that out, so I wonder if that's the qualifying difference? I don't know.
She'll have a dispensary facility license. I mean, nothing a cannabis seller, like it just seems, just as confusing to me.
No, but it just seems like a different level of licensing if I'm reading another.
I'm sure that's what it is.
Yeah, I don't know if it's based off of the grade of the cannabis either or the drug.
You don't know, but we don't really know the difference, basically.
Or like how much, how much cannabis you have on site?
Yeah.
Okay.
Are you, I'm looking at the law right now to try to see what you're talking about.
Yeah, if you look at it more.
Hybrid retailers, yeah. It seems like it's more medical, it has to have a medical preservation plan.
Yeah, does this, dispensary, can they do compounding? I think it's different from, I think the dispensary might be more like a prescription, a, and I think they might be able to do compounding of some type.
Yes.
More mixing.
Yeah, versus retailer.
Straightforward. There was definitely a distinction.
Retailer just buys it and then gives it.
And it out, yeah.
I think it's the more scientific approach.
More pharmacological, like a...
Yeah. A dispensary.
A dispensary.
Yeah.
The commission want to do anything with this this evening? Or do they want time to consider this and see if there are further questions? I know not all of us were here when this was first brought up.
I think that, my understanding is not having this in the regs allowed this to happen wherever we want, wherever somebody comes in. Is that correct or no? Because we already voted on it.
No, it wouldn't because I think, again, I'm going to the intent here, where the intent was to approve the language, and it just, for some reason, never got put into the 27th edition. So when FHI came to do Phase 1 after that.
They didn't have it.
They never knew that it existed in the first place. So I think the intent was...
So this isn't a mission?
I think, yeah, I think, well, I think the intent was that it should have been in there in both processes, and it hasn't. It doesn't mean, so I would say that the language as it exists would still be the language or the letter of the law in Stonington.
Okay.
If it didn't change.
So whether it's there or not, it's there. It still protects us.
I would, I would say that. I'd have to get the town attorney's opinion, but that's what I would say.
Are we getting any grief from the public? For a second, it was like five years ago.
I get, I get maybe one call every like six months about cannabis, like a retail establishment in town. But my office doesn't really deal with them that often.
No, no cultivators have come in looking to...
No, every time, we just send them what I...
To Norwich.
Well, we send them what I, what I put in the packet and just say, that's what we have, go with that. But yeah, it's usually a call once and then never call back.
I think we should just go ahead and approve it. That's my personal opinion.
Yeah, it sounds like, it sounds like it's perfunctory almost, so we already did approve it. So what is the commission's pleasure, then?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the application, PZ 2446 RA, Town of Stonington, the proposed text amendment with the one change for the table there that you had noted to remove those special use permits for cannabis cultivator and cannabis dispensary facility.
Motion with, with what stipulation to remove the cultivation language by Ryan. Thank you, Ryan. Is there a second?
A second motion.
Second and by Gary. Thank you, Gary. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
I'm opposed.
Chair abstains. Motion passes. Has everybody looked at the new submittals? Any questions, or Clifton, on the item, the robust list of forthcoming items?
No, I'm actually going to...
Busy March 4.
And I'm not going to be here.
You're missing a busy...
I know. There's nobody to do that by Zoom, huh?
Any, if there are no questions, then I think the appropriate motion is in order.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adjourn this hearing.
Motion adjourned. No second required. All in favor?
Aye.
The meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.